Okay. It being seven o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Rundle Planning Board to order. Today, September second, two thousand twenty-five, it is seven P M. And we are in the municipal meeting room. I'll start with a roll call.
Tom McGinn.
Paul Green.
Susan Roth.
Rich Canong, I am the chair. We have on on here, we have the approval of the agenda. The agenda consists of the approval of minutes for August nineteenth. Public comment. This is some, there's, there was a public hearing for total care A B A daycare. After that, we have pending business, total care A B A daycare, and we have new business, Southern Maine Marine. And then we're gonna go home. Well, we're gonna discuss a missing item on the agenda, but then we're gonna go home.
Move to approve as read.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green to approve the minutes as read. Any discussion? I'm sorry, not the, not the minutes, the agenda.
Sir.
Hearing no objections, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Yep, you have two sets, the sidewalk and the planning board meeting.
So I move that we approve the sidewalk minutes of, uh, let's see, August nineteenth.
Second that.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn to approve the minutes of the sidewalk for August nineteenth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Now on to the minutes of the meeting itself.
I move that we approve the minutes of August nineteenth.
I'd second that.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn to approve the minutes of the meeting of August nineteenth. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Time for public comment. If you are here as a member of the public and do not have any business in front of the planning board, now is the time that you would say to us, hey, can you look at this or look at that section of the ordinance? But if it's got something to do with the applicants that are in front of us, we ask you just wait until we get to them. I can, yes.
If you haven't signed in, please do solve the attendance sheet that way I have accurate minutes. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Since nobody jumped up to to make a comment, we'll move right into the public hearing. The public hearing total, it is seven oh three. Total care A B A daycare, a conditional use application. Proposal for a change of use to a special needs daycare facility. The business will serve up to forty children with special needs and will include therapy services. There are no proposed changes to the site plan. The applicant will be leasing the space from the current owner Champagne Holding LLC. The applicant is being represented by Patrick Donahue of Commercial Buildout LLC. The parcel is located at twenty-six twenty-five Portland Road on Tax Map One Lot Four in the Gateway District. Mister Donahue. Take the hot seat and we'll turn it over to the public. Okay, and anybody from the public that has any comments to make about this? This particular application? Could you, could you state your name, please? Okay.
That's, you know, I'm just curious, is the age group and is it a daycare where they'll be here all day and then we talk about therapy? Is it, where is it, just we bring in some of this again?
It is. Well, not physical therapy, but uh, therapy for, if I, I should, you know.
Okay, come out, folks. We need you to sit at the table only because the mics won't record things and then I'm gonna put all kinds of funny things in the minutes, said you said it. Thank you.
I'll let her explain more.
So wait, can you just repeat the question for the record?
Yes, I just wanna know what, uh, what is, I know this much needs so many minutes just to give them therapy while they're there or are they gonna be there for a minute?
So, well, to answer the ages first, three to five would be the age we're working with. Uh, but they would be receiving therapy at the location, so A B A therapy is what we provide. We support working with children who have behavioral needs. Uh, so typically they'll be diagnosed with autism, but it really could be anything that C D S will refer our way for the kids in the community who need the support. We may have other therapists come in like a physical therapist, speech therapist, but that's a little bit down the road. But right now typically it would be more like that preschool style education while they're receiving behavioral therapy at the same time.
And I'm just worried because of the intersection, if there were children, um, right now it's not that safe in any way, so they could be able to build, building.
Yes, on our plan, it shows that we've got a fenced in area there, we're completing the fenced in area.
They, they have a, on the, on the plans that they've submitted, they are fencing in the backyard.
As I know, it's a daycare.
So I think she wanted to know the schedule also.
The schedule, great question. Uh, and I'll mention too about the fence, there's another section of it that like has a gap, which, which we'd also be filling in, so it, the kids will all be safe and outside when they play. The time, so they can come in three hour blocks in the morning and then again in the afternoon. Um, so it would be like starting at eight A M. So it'd be like eight thirty to, uh, eight thirty to eight, nine. Eleven thirty, and then there would be a break, and then the next three hour group would come after that. Um, so they wouldn't be there past five P M would be the latest, but really most would be getting out around three thirty.
Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing at seven oh six. And we will move into pending business. Well, we, we had another public hearing that was scheduled. But we have run into an issue with getting it on the agenda and getting the newspaper ready for it. It takes longer to publicize a change in the ordinance, public hearing than it does to for your public hearing, for example, you guys are only seven days, we have a fourteen day period. Anne was not able to get it in. So we're gonna push that one off. We will just table that until Anne gets back and we can get it taken care of. Pending business, total care A B A daycare, conditional use application. A proposal for a change of use to a special needs daycare facility. The business will serve up to forty children with special needs and will include therapy services. There are no proposed changes to the site plan, the applicant will be leasing the space from the current owner Champagne's Holding LLC. The applicant is being represented by Patrick Donahue of Commercial Buildout LLC. And the parcel is located at twenty-six twenty-five Portland Road on Tax Map One Lot Four in the Gateway District. Does anyone on the board have any questions for the applicant?
Well, I just, oh, I want to clarify one thing in reference to your question, so you're gonna have a changeover of students, so there'll be a morning group, as I understand it, there'll be a morning group and that morning group will leave. And then the afternoon group will come. So it's not like children are coming at eight o'clock in the morning and they're leaving at five o'clock at night. So there is a changeover um, of the kids that are attending. Um, otherwise I don't have any questions.
I have a, a letter from one of the butters, David Trotter. I believe he lives almost directly across the street from the, from where you come out on, on Old Post. I wanted to check in with you to discuss the additional traffic for the daycare. For the daycare use, if the business serves up to forty people daily excluding staff, that means there will be an extra eighty cars per day, forty going in the morning, forty leaving in the afternoon. And if you count ten more for, for staff, that's another ten cars in the morning and another ten in the afternoon. That totals one hundred cars per day in and out, likely all at the same time. The traffic at this intersection is very tough already with super fuels, uh, with superior fuels and added daily trips with more people moving in the area. We already get the cars turning around an hour driveway in the neighborhood along with cars parked on the sides of Old Post Road toward Route One. When the traffic comes in and from Route One at thirty-five to fifty miles an hour, while cars are parked on the side of Old Post, it's not good when you meet another car coming in the opposite direction. Twenty-six twenty-five Portland Road has two en, two entrances, which means there are three intersections all within one hundred feet of each other. Personally, I don't care what type of business goes into the building, but I can tell you it's tough to get in and out of Old Post Road currently. Adding one hundred cars per day more on Old Post Road will make it, will make things worse. Has there been any conversation with the proposed tenant or the planning board regarding the impact of this additional traffic? If the traffic was, if the traffic was Route One traffic, it would, it would be what it is, but that additional traffic will be both Route One and Old Post Road. The neigh, the neighborhood just sees this this added traffic as an accident waiting to happen. Let me know your thoughts. And that is from David Trotter. And.
They said it was up to forty children, but how many per day do you think we actually do?
So it would be wonderful if we could service that many children, but to be completely honest about staffing, we wouldn't be taking in more children than we could sufficiently support. So yeah, I know some of the other daycares or similar facilities have significantly less, fewer children because it's difficult to find staff. So probably would maybe feel closer to a group of fifteen in the morning. Be amazing if we get like twenty children in the morning. Um, and we're just going through the childcare licensing and the, um, the ratio rule, so it's not, um, like there will be, doesn't need to be so many staff in there, but, um, I don't think that we would have forty children in there at one time. I also would like to add for the childcare licensing, this is a little bit separate, but we need look, emergency locations to go to in the event things happen. And the church across the street, that's like directly there, the Deliverance Center, they, um, I spoke with them on the phone and they are comfortable with, well, number one, an emergencies that we could head to. They're a lot, but I asked about pickup and drop off too as a backup, backup plan. Let's say we do find it feels a little bit busier if we could utilize their space and collaborate with them. And they were completely fine with us utilizing their space because they're only there Sundays for the parking lot. Um, and then Tuesday night, starting at six P M and Wednesday at seven, uh, six thirty. So they're never there at the, we don't have overlapping hours essentially. So that's a backup as well to help with the vehicles if we need it.
I'd like to point out, I, I wish Mister Trotter had been here because then, then you could have addressed the traffic issue. But he questions whether or not the planning board did, and we did, and you have, you have an M D O T.
Yes, I think we.
They, they don't wanna do a traffic study.
Correct. It doesn't meet the thresholds for that to warrant one.
But it's kinda hard to convey that to him because he's not here.
I wonder why people just, yes, after they run into the building and they put the big bars. It's been out for quite a while, but they got on to our, over thirty-five, twenty miles now and they got it. It's more of a surprise, so that's why my concern with.
Overall, it's really the only concern that, that I'm hearing from the board that, or that I personally have is just the, the traffic, it, that it is a challenging intersection. But, um, we, we did on the sidewalk, two weeks ago, we stood there and, and there is good sight distance heading to the south and to the north, i- it's more than adequate. And, and D O T felt it, it was, it doesn't warrant a study, so as far as we're concerned, it, 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 it's a difficult situation, but it, it meets all of our standards.
Yes, sir.
We got another visit here, just staying in that. Traffic is there constantly, one at a time, it doubles up, they can't stop, keep up. These trucks are going back and forth all day long, all night long, they, they never stop. There's a lot of traffic on that road and that whole parking lot inside of that street would be impossible. Parking at all with it, not, not at all would be the best thing.
I think you'll find that Champagne's is actually gonna be reducing quite a bit, the company that bought it, its basic alcohol, their main operations, that's why they left the office first. I believe they're shipping center as well. Uh, they've moved on all their operations in Manhattan, what I understand. So over the next couple of years, those leases expire, you can, my understanding.
Okay, any other comments from the board?
All my comments were incidentally, uh, sidewalk.
So I think it's important to reiterate that there are certain standards that D O T uh, lays out and that we need to consider, and we actually had an extensive conversation about entering and exit, exiting the parking lot and uh, what we could require and what they could do voluntarily. And basically they've met, uh, the standard and there's very little the board can do. Unfortunately or fortunately, and since D O T has declined to look into the matter further and do a study. The board has to basically comply with the fact that they've, you know, uh, met their burden in terms of showing us what they're gonna do.
If, if you weren't on Route One, it wouldn't be a problem. Well, Route One's D O T traffic.
It's not true, Route one eleven is the same way.
Yeah, okay, you're right.
So I think we're all fighting the same thing in this town right now. You take a look, I, I don't even know why they post speed limits because people are flying up and down every one of the roads. Route one, one eleven, New Road, Limerick Road. It, it's crazy right now, and unfortunately we can't do, we can't hold that against people who are trying to open a business or any of that stuff. The issue is not the business or their pat, traffic pattern because it's been studied and been approved. The issue is that people are driving like crazy around this town. They're flying through every one of these streets. You know, thirty-five means sixty. It's a different issue we gotta take up, but it's not something we can hold businesses back to.
But that said, you have to take note of the fact of the physical situation that you're in and all of the types of traffic that you're going to encounter and your students and their families are going to encounter going in and out of your parking lot, so you know, it's a word of caution because you really have to be on it.
Now, back to that, do you want me to make comment on what we added to the plans since the last meeting?
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Our conversations in the, the last meeting, there was some things that we wanted to add to the plan to alleviate some of the concern. And we've since added those, it, it shows on there, closing that fence in, in there, um, it also shows we still haven't got approval from D O T of if we can be in the setback or not. The setback there, I believe, is only three feet. Uh, we'll work with public works, if we're not able to be in the setback, we'll be really close to the road, so people still get.
So why don't you stand up and repeat that and let the audience hear exactly what you said because you speak so softly. We can hear you, but if you're not facing them, they can't hear you.
I got a, I got a better idea.
Okay. Give them a, give them a mic.
You want me to sit right up there?
Yeah, because it's important that you know that we really did discuss this at length. And they are going to do what they can to mitigate the situation. The force is yours.
So, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So since the last meeting, there were some, in the sidewalk, we had some changes to the plan to make things a little bit easier. Uh, we were adding a children at play sign on both ends of the property. We're working with D O T, we just haven't had an answer yet, whether we can place the signs in the setback or if they have to be outside the setback, which I believe is three feet on Portland Road. And, uh, we'll just get with public works and with the planner, with the exact location with Asbils afterwards. Other than that, we were gonna add a blind drive on the southernly side of the property so that people could see that as well.
And we discussed mirrors of some kind, if you can add those?
I'm not sure that we can, I, I think I talked about last time, C M P would have to approve those, I don't think we can really have the say in that. But I, I don't know what to, where the mirrors would really help, I think the slow down signs and things would be more, that's more for entering and exiting the property, and I don't think we really need it, we get pretty clear distance.
Yeah, given the sight distance on Route One, I'm not sure it would help.
Yeah, pretty good sight line.
It's really more for people in the parking lot or going out as opposed to people driving by. But.
Okay. We have an issue. Nothing to do with anybody, but the town planner is not here, we don't have the notice of decision. So we can, we can vote either to approve it or to tell you to go away and off, but we can't give you the plans or the notice of decision.
I can come back and get those after, that's fine.
We need to have, we need to read the notice of decision in a public meeting so that everybody knows, so the earliest we could do that will be in two weeks, on the sixteenth.
Okay.
But what can we do now?
Well, we, we can vote on whether or not we're going to approve or deny the application. But in order, in order to give him what he needs to go forward and get a permit, he's gonna have to wait until the sixteenth when we have a public hearing, which is.
Notice of perfectly fine with us.
So let's do that.
We've had the public.
Yeah, we have.
So we just.
I'm, I'm just saying, we, we can vote on it, we just can't sign any documents.
Yep.
All right, so I move that we take a vote on the application.
No, no, you have to move to accept or reject.
Okay, I move that we accept the application as proposed.
Second that.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn to accept the application and to grant the, the permit. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. So we'll, we'll see you in two weeks on the sixteenth.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That was a bourbon. You should have been.
Okay, next item on the agenda. New business. Southern Maine Marine Site Plan Review Application. A proposal to construct a fifty-five hundred square foot addition to an existing office retail building. The addition will contain three marine repair maintenance space with overhead doors for trucks and trailer access. There will not be an increase in impervious surface or parking spaces. But the existing employee spaces will be relocated on site. The property owner is K P T Marine LLC, D B A Southern Maine Marine. Lena Toby, P E of Walsh Engineering Associates is the project manner, manager. The parcel is located at twenty-four sixty-one Portland Road, Tax Map Twelve Lot Four Two in the business zone, business industrial zone. Did I say your name correctly?
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much, uh, for, for the record, uh, my name is Warner Gilliam, um, I work with Walsh Engineering Associates, um.
Yeah, that's definitely not the name.
No, no, I'm not Lena. Uh, and joining me this evening is also Sean Dimas, uh, from Kenny Bunkport Marina.
Okay. Gentlemen, show us what you brought.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, so, uh, as, as you all know, uh, we're here before you this evening, uh, we're requesting a plan amendment, uh, to, uh, Southern Maine, uh, the Southern Maine Marine, uh, site plan. Uh, as you all may be aware of, uh, the property was approved in two thousand fourteen uh, for, uh, the expanded number of billings that are there on, uh, that were there on site. Uh, it's approximately five acres of land, uh, that's developed and improved with an office retail building, two warehouse buildings, workshop building, uh, and, and a large area that's partially paved, partially gravel, uh, that consists of a work yard, and then there's also outdoor boat storage there as well. And so, uh, overall, uh, the plan was developed, uh, as presented in two thousand fourteen, uh, with the exception, there was a phase three outdoor gravel storage area, uh, that's not shown on this plan, but that's, uh, that's to the south. And that, that area was partially developed, but it wasn't fully, uh, wasn't fully built out as approved. Uh, we also have a number of above ground propane tanks on site. Uh, there's, uh, storm water management, uh, that was designed and, uh, primarily built uh, and also has an underdrained soil filter treatment structure on site. So as, uh, as you all heard, uh, we're here before you, uh, for this particular building addition here that's on the backside, uh, of, of the, uh, the office and the, uh, retail building. Uh, we have, uh, since receiving, uh, memorandum from the chief, uh, we've been working towards some modifications to the plan, uh, primarily, uh, in, in a reduction of the size of the building, uh, that get us uh, to the point of where we're, uh, we're not required to install a separate, uh, fire suppression system. Uh, so the building size has been reduced, uh, to a fifty by one hundred, so that brings our interior square footage down to below, uh, the five thousand square foot threshold. Uh, and just in, in order to, you know, avoid need, uh, for, uh, for fire suppression system. And, uh, primarily, I mean, what we're, what we're attempting here, uh, is that, you know, this is a site that, uh, that it manages boat storage and boat repair, and so there's currently repair, uh, that occurs over here in the workshop, uh, but we're looking to, uh, formalize and, uh, and better handle, uh, the boat repair needs, uh, that occur primarily for customers who store their boats there on site, uh, and also in other locations for, uh, Kenny Bunkport, uh, Marine. Uh, we are relocating a number of, uh, employee parking spaces, uh, that were, uh, shown on a previously approved plan. Uh, previously, uh, parking was located on this side of the, on the side of the office building and those spaces are being relocated over uh, to the other side of the workshop here. Well, we have a number of, uh, storm water utility, uh, drain lines that will need to be relocated because currently they run through the footprint of the proposed addition, and those will be relocated and those will, uh, you know, transfer storm water over, uh, to the pre-existing storm water management area. Uh, we have a propane tank that's located currently in a back corner of the building, that's also, uh, proposed to be relocated, uh, again, just for ease of fill, uh, uh, as well, just because it'll, the access to it will be blocked by the new addition. Uh, Rundle Fire and Rescue, as you know, has, uh, provided us with some comments regarding, uh, uh, the size of the addition, we noted, uh, those changes and will submit a revised plan set to, uh, to the board. Uh, we've also, uh, a- as we've been working through other comments, uh, the owners indicated that they wanted to have a gate, uh, separate that separates between areas that are more publicly accessible versus, uh, versus the work areas, uh, primarily just to be closed, uh, to outside of business hours and over the weekend, just to prevent, uh, you know, the public from entering into, into the work area. Brought this to the attention of the chief and, uh, we're scheduled to have a site, uh, visit and walk, uh, this Friday morning, just to go over the specific location, uh, of, you know, of the gate and to address any other concerns that the chief may have. Uh, landscaping, that I, I did see there was a comment, uh, from, uh, from planning staff, so we did receive comments this morning, uh, from planning staff uh, regarding the application, understand there was some question regarding, uh, landscaping. Uh, and, you know, we're happy to, you know, have a discussion with the board in terms of what you would, uh, what you would typically, uh, like to see, you know, as it relates to plantings, you know, I will note, and as you all are, are likely aware, this area along Route One, particularly on the front of the property is, you know, a lot, we have a large amount of exposed bedrock and very shallow soils there. And so we just asked the board, take that into consideration as, as we, uh, discuss any, any buffer plantings or things of that nature. Uh, so that's, uh, just a quick overview in terms of what the project is, uh, I'm happy to answer uh, any questions that the board may have, uh, or, you know, address any other further comments that are in memo.
Go ahead, Paul. Is the building mainly gonna be doing boat repair or are you actually gonna be building boats?
No, it's primarily boat repair.
Just engine repair, things like that?
Maintenance, yeah, maintenance repair, yep.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is the whole fire suppression thing, if you stop building.
And the reason I'm asking is the whole fire suppression thing, if you stop building and copper and concrete, fiberglass and.
Yeah, yeah. It's a lot more involved.
Burns real nice.
Yeah.
So that's why I was asking. All right. Well, good. I I did have a question and I'm glad the chief is here because he can help me cl- uh, to clarify this. If it's more than five thousand square feet in total, so you're looking outside exterior included, everything?
I'm just looking.
Well, yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, no, 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 I'm I I'm talking, I'm sorry. I'm talking the new building itself is going to be more than five thousand feet? Okay.
So it it is now.
Right, well, that's, that that's what I thought he had said. But then I thought I had heard him say fifty-one hundred.
No.
Okay.
No.
Not a problem.
So I have a question, are you going to be able to go from one building to the other without going outside? Are they going to be connected in some way? So someone working in the light blue building can get to the dark blue building without having to go outside?
That's a great question.
Yeah, tunnels.
Tunnels?
Those are called escape tunnels.
Can I approach the board?
Of course.
So here's your interior, so here's your interior floor layout. So here's the existing building that's here.
Yep.
And so what winds up happening here is that you do wind up with a, with constructive fire separation between the two buildings. So essentially, fire purposes, we now have two buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And so what we, what we'll have here is we'll have fire-rated door, you know, that enters into, you know, that enters into the workshop area as well as there's a, there will be another double door here, uh, that's going to have a two-hour, uh, rated shutter, fire shutter there. So. So this floor is a, is it a, is a slightly higher elevation here? Uh, so, uh, essentially for all practical purposes, they, uh, within this area here, they store a lot of parts. Uh, that'll, you know, that they'll be able to move back and forth between, you know, still with the two uh buildings that are here.
Sure, okay. There are two different elevations. How was the double door work, which?
So for all, so this is, think about this, this is really like a loading dock.
Okay, so it'd be.
That's right. It is, it's high, it's high enough that if they, you know, if they have any pallets or anything like that, that's a little access, they'll have a small, they'll have a, you know, small forklift they can operate in there. Yeah. But yeah, but otherwise, that's really how that operates. It's like a loading dock.
Good. Yeah. Has the chief seen this? Why don't we show it to him anyway? Yeah, why don't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
And just, just for my own information, what kind of fire suppression system are you going to have?
They're not going.
Well, this.
No, no. They, they gotta have something. Nothing?
Fire suppress.
Okay. If that's what's required, that's what's required. I didn't know if they had.
Man in a hose.
Well, yeah, I I didn't know if they would, they might have an external hookup so you guys could get in there. I don't know any of this stuff.
PF flyers.
Huh?
PF flyers. Well, that's why I asked what they were doing. If you're doing boat repair and engine repair, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You're doing fiberglass work, caper trees, things like that, then. No. What would you think?
Shellac on a criss-craft, something like that, what do you put on varnish? Something like this.
So I wish I would. Uh, located parking for employees, is that all gravel area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yes, and that's, that's a great question. Uh, so at this point, you know, everything on site, so we're not proposing to disturb any uh currently vegetated areas, all areas that the work, you know, that this work is being proposed on is currently, you know, either, you know, building concrete or gravel.
So no disturbing of impermeable surface or anything.
No, I mean, you know, I'm sure there'll be, you know, there'll be some just in terms of for the excavation, you know, for the foundation excavation on the backside. Uh, but that, you know, that would be, you know, re-vegetated on the back.
Yeah, just gonna say.
Yep.
So you guys are gonna, you're rig working a plan, we'll have a new set applied, all right, right?
Uh, yes, so I I did send, uh, I sent a copy, uh, of the, essentially, it's the same, it's the same site plan, you know, just with this, you know, with a smaller building footprint of, and as well as, you know, we'll, uh, submit a revised, uh, you know, building plan as well. Uh, I do want to note, uh, that, you know, this is, you know, what what you're seeing here today, this is essentially, this is the first phase for the property. So we do anticipate coming back to the board, uh, at some point here, uh, in the relative near future for uh that there are essentially, um, two vacant lots, you know, that are adjacent to part of that. And so we'll be coming back to the board, uh, with a further amended, uh, site plan for that, uh, for that property. Uh, that portion is, it's a little bit more involved, uh, you know, than, you know, than the shop addition, uh, and but we wanted to go ahead and get the, you know, the shop addition, uh, before you, uh, and approved so that they can begin that uh as, while we're doing our, our site design work for the second phase.
Okay.
Sidewalk?
Yep.
I'll make a motion, we do a sidewalk, uh, what's that next meeting?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
When is your sidewalk on Friday?
Eight-thirty.
Oh, in the morning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You're more than welcome to join us.
Well, we have, we have to do one as a planning board, I mean, if we can.
We're, I I was thinking maybe we could piggyback.
We can't, we can't, we can't get it published in time.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, well, we're going to come in depend on. But.
Yeah. We'll, we'll have to because we have to publish the fact that we're going to have a sidewalk.
No, I think you have.
Okay.
And that's, that's a seven day.
We have to publish.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Short notice to try to get you guys there on Friday, on Saturday.
We have to publish it. Now, some stuff, so I'll make a motion, we do a sidewalk on, uh, Tuesday, September sixteenth at six o'clock.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Paul Green.
The sixteenth at six o'clock.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Roth to have a sidewalk, uh, September sixteenth at six P M. Any discussion?
Unfortunately, I won't be able to get that night.
Okay. The good thing about sidewalk, we only need three.
Yeah.
I can make it. Warring any unforeseen, you know.
All right.
Six P M.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. And as, as soon as you get the plans, the app. I was going to say the application looks like it's complete.
Yeah, it does.
So we'll.
You do the sidewalk.
Yeah, we have to do the sidewalk first.
Yeah, the exception of the, the new plan, everything else.
Everything else looks fine.
Should we, can we public, can we schedule a public hearing?
No, not until the sidewalk.
Okay. I thought we'd just do what it's.
We don't, we don't need to do a, uh, a public hearing on this, it's not a conditional use.
Oh, okay, there you go.
So we could actually do a sidewalk and approve it that night.
We could.
If the plan, you got your final plan and stuff, we could do it all at the same meeting.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure and have those to, um, as soon as possible, yeah.
Okay. And I'll let, I'll let Charles know if he can go through and draw up the, uh.
Findings of fact.
Findings of fact, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, then we can get it all done, so they don't have to wait. Sounds good.
Okay. The only other, thank you very much, gentlemen.
All right.
The only other thing that we have is the discussion about the public hearing that we were going to have tonight.
On the industrial park?
Well, no, there, there isn't, but Anne brought up an interest.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
In that, we, we don't really define what it is and we have no parameters about what it would look like. So we might want to work on putting, say, you know, is there a particular size, a minimum size that they have to have for?
We discussed that.
We did.
We weren't going to do that because then you're locked into something. It was to be, we said the only place we could support one would be over that roof whenever.
Okay.
The only one that's got, right, the facilities and everything to support in the.
Yep.
And I remember having that discussion at meeting where we said, no, you know, somebody said, do we make it ten acres? Do we make it a hundred acres? And we said, wait till somebody comes in and proposes something to us and we can tell them, these are the areas we have available. Unless you propose something else we'll look at. I, I don't have a problem, if you guys want to go down, I wrote it, we need something.
It was.
No, I, I think it should be discretionary depending upon what's being proposed.
Right.
The area that's available or the area they want to take.
Right.
And I think we can make it on a case-by-case basis.
Well, we should, we, if, we should put in, I don't know if it would be in the definitions, uh, that it is restricted to the B I district.
It is.
I, it might have been, I, it's been a while since I looked at it.
Okay, so in the definitions, we've got industrial park, an area of the town that is developed for an approved industrial and commercial use only. Industrial parks may include da, 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 and then in the B-one district is where we added industrial.
Okay. We just.
We had it in another section, but then we said, oh, get it out of there.
We're going to have, we're going to have to put it down here on the conditional use.
Industrial park?
Industrial park.
Okay. That's fine.
Why would it matter if it's manufactured, well, warehousing, um.
Even a certain amount of retail is allowed.
It's, it's, it's the way we have, have it set up.
Okay, I guess that.
And that, that's it. It's, because we're, we're going to say, yeah, you can have an industrial park, it, which is different than saying you can have manufacturing.
The following uses in the business slash office park slash industrial district are permitted. Under permitted uses.
And is an industrial park a use or just?
It's a designation because we're not, we're not going to say.
All the uses are still.
Well, no, because there's a bunch of conditional uses. So, you know, somebody could come in and say, you know, I'm going to have it and I'm going to put up an industrial park. It could have all, it could have three or four.
Right.
Of all of these different uses in that park, which is what's going to make it conditional.
Yeah, and I, I'm a sort of Paul to leave it open a little bit because things are evolving and we really don't know what's coming down the pipe. And you hate to put it in such a tight box that you have to come back and redo this whole thing.
I will be, I, I gotta talk though, because I don't know what she's coming at. Let me try and figure out what she's talking about because she had said something to me once before too, and I thought we had it, but apparently we don't because she still seems to think something's missing. So let me chat with her. I'll go through the actual words and see what she's got that she wants added. And then I'll come back to you guys at the next meeting.
Yeah. Well, like, like Tom said, we've got lots of time.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I, I'm okay with no rush.
Till next time, meeting.
Yes.
Well.
Few months prior.
It would be good if we had it tied out by the end of February.
Yeah. I think we can get that.
Oh, yeah, I don't think there'd be much of a problem there.
I hope we can. All right, well.
I'll talk with Anne when she gets back and I'll come back to you guys. All right, where did she go, she was on vacation.
They're on vacation.
Someplace exotic.
Well, that depends on exotic. Have you ever been, have you ever been to Denali or the Sitka?
Yeah, that's.
Yes.
My thought last.
Oh, that's fun. Now's a good time to go.
You have a motion to approve it, uh, to.
Adjourn, yes.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Okay.